Very rare phenomenon today.
Holy shit.
You know what they say, running around with the elusive?
Morning flight on Facebook post.
I wish.
Oh, someone else did it.
Maybe twice a year.
I was a victim in that case. I was a victim in that.
Oh, okay.
Okay, everybody ready?
Call to order the regular common council meeting, Monday, October 2nd, 7:00 PM. Roll call.
Frye?
Here.
McIntyre?
Yes.
Candy Davis?
Yes.
Olson?
Wellness?
Yes.
Paul Davis?
Yes.
All the person Olson is excused. Next item is pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Confirmation of appropriate meeting notice.
Meeting was noticed on Friday, September 29th. Agenda's posted at Post Office Library in Central.
Next item is council acceptance of the agenda. There are a couple little changes that need to be made before we do that. One is number three under finance, should not be deducted on $4,000. And we have to move the adjourn to the end of the meeting after the closed session. Otherwise, we can't do the closed session, so.
Good.
If somebody wants to make that as a motion with those changes.
I will make that as a motion with those two changes.
Second.
Any discussion on the agenda? Hearing none. All those in favor saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Personal appearances. Anyone in the audience who wish to speak on anything that's not on the agenda? Okay, we'll move on to the minutes from September 18th.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any corrections or additions? Hearing none. All those in favor saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Committee reports. Finance, Mark.
Make a motion to approve change order number one for R.T. Fox.
Second.
For a deduction of $41,886.44 for the Highland and Park project.
Second.
Still second over there? He's on third. Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call.
Wellness?
Yes.
Frye?
Yes.
McIntyre?
Yes.
Candy Davis?
Yes.
Paul Davis?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Make a motion to approve a final pay request for R.T. Fox in the amount of $0 for the Highland and Park project.
Second.
Any discussion? Pay them bills all day long. Roll call.
Wellness?
Yes.
McIntyre?
Yes.
Candy Davis?
Yes.
Paul Davis?
Yes.
Frye?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Motion to approve a change order number one for G. Fox for an increase of $4,653.97 for the Lawton Street project.
Motion to approve.
Or second.
Okay, any discussion? Monday, Monday. Hearing none. Roll call.
Wellness?
Yes.
Candy Davis?
Yes.
Paul Davis?
Yes.
Frye?
Yes.
McIntyre?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Motion to approve a final pay request for G. Fox in the amount of $0 for the Lawton Street project.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call.
That second by Frye?
I think it was Matt.
McIntyre. We look so much alike, I know.
Wellness?
Yes.
Thirty years ago I could go out and wear it.
McIntyre?
Yes.
Candy Davis?
Yes.
Paul Davis?
Yes.
Frye?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Motion to approve pay request number two for Nelson in the amount of $35,212.19 for the High Street project.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call.
Wellness?
Yes.
Candy Davis?
Yes.
Paul Davis?
Yes.
Frye?
Yes.
McIntyre?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Motion to approve bills and payroll in the amount of $127,817.96.
Second.
Who got that one over there?
That's a draw.
Frye's easier to write.
Took a straw. Took a straw out of the hat.
Any questions on the bills? Hearing none. Roll call.
Wellness?
Yes.
Frye?
Yes.
McIntyre?
Yes.
Candy Davis?
Yes.
Paul Davis?
Yes.
Frye?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Motion to approve a temporary Class B license to Edgerton Volunteer Fire Department on October 14th.
Second.
Any discussion?
Sounds good, Chris. Down in back at the old Rock County again. I like the old days.
At least this time. We'll see how it goes.
Years ago, it was pretty good down there.
Hasn't passed yet while we still got in the dance, but. Any other discussion?
Second.
Davis.
Paul Davis.
Nope.
We're really gonna mess you up, Cindy.
I missed it, so I couldn't tell ya. Roll call.
Wellness?
Yes.
Paul Davis?
Yes.
Frye?
Yes.
McIntyre?
Yes.
Candy Davis?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Motion to approve a private property on public sidewalk permit for the Edgerton Books and Art.
Any discussion? That was a Wellness-MacIntyre motion. Roll call.
Wellness?
Yes.
McIntyre?
Yes.
Candy Davis?
Yes.
Paul Davis?
Yes.
Frye?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Motion to approve a sandwich board permit for Edgerton Books and Art.
Candy Davis, seconds.
Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call.
Wellness?
Yes.
Candy Davis?
Yes.
Paul Davis?
Yes.
Frye?
Yes.
McIntyre?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Motion to approve this allowance of claim for Stephen Baverly.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call.
Wellness?
Yes.
Candy Davis?
Yes.
Paul Davis?
Yes.
Frye?
Yes.
McIntyre?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Motion to approve Edgerton Chamber of Commerce sublease of depot.
Second. Gotta be quicker slick.
I didn't catch who got that one.
That was...
Okay.
You two sound a lot of light.
Holy shit. I remember fighting. Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call.
Wellness?
Yes.
Frye?
Yes.
McIntyre?
Yes.
Candy Davis?
Yes.
Paul Davis?
Yes.
Motion passes. Good luck.
Yes, I'm welcome.
Have fun.
Motion to approve a small ED fund grant for 110 Henry Street not to exceed $2,446.92.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call.
Wellness?
Yes.
Candy Davis?
Yes.
Paul Davis?
Yes.
Frye?
Yes.
McIntyre?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Motion to approve a facade grant for 126 West Fulton Street not to exceed $5,000.
Second.
Did you get one?
I'm sorry, somebody else.
Candy Davis.
Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call.
Wellness?
Yes.
Candy Davis?
Yes.
Paul Davis?
Yes.
Frye?
Yes.
McIntyre?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Motion to approve a facade grant not to exceed $600, an ED grant for framing drywall not to exceed $1,502, an ED grant for electrical not to exceed $2,800, and an ED grant for plumbing not to exceed $3,000 for 204 West Fulton Street.
Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call.
Wellness?
Yes.
McIntyre?
Yes.
Candy Davis?
Yes.
Paul Davis?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Motion to approve a facade grant in the amount not to exceed $1,278.40 for 4 West Fulton Street.
Second.
Any discussion?
I just wanna comment, over the years that the RDA created this facade grant loan, and these old buildings in this town have got some... We needed assistance from the city, and I think it helped maintain the buildings into more viable businesses and so forth. It's a very excellent program that the city and everyone started years ago. I mean, it's really a testament to what the city's been doing to help out.
That was intent when we started, was to improve the downtown area.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. Roll call.
Wellness?
Yes.
Frye?
Yes.
McIntyre?
Yes.
Candy Davis?
Yes.
Paul Davis?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Motion to approve City of Edgerton Resolution 2317, budget amendment for street repair.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call.
Wellness?
Yes.
Candy Davis?
Yes.
Paul Davis?
Yes.
Frye?
Yes.
McIntyre?
Yes.
Motion passes.
All they have for finance.
That was about enough. Personnel committee, anything from...
Oh, yes. Personnel committee met last Tuesday, September 26th. We had talked about health insurance increase, dental insurance, discussed considering wages for 2018. Pretty bleak information to provide. Health insurance is going up quite a bit, so it's gonna cost the... If we were to stay the same with our health insurance plan for the employees, it would increase the city's expense, increase it by $27,461.51. So, as a committee, we had talked about ways in which we could offset some of that increase, because if you recall, at the time that we were talking about this, our only... We had an increase in levy of $30,000. So, the health insurance increase was eating up all but $3,000 of money that we had to work for the levy. So, what we had suggested was for the employees to go to a more of a shared cost of their health insurance. So, we had voted for employees to go to a increase of a 7.5% employee contribution. So, what that means is, for a family plan, it's an additional $47.44 a month per employee. For a single plan, it's $5.75 per month, per employee. So, what that did was it helped reduce the increase to the city, but it's still an increase of $16,056.69. So, we also, as a personnel committee, had approved, recommended for approval, no wage increase for 2018 for the employees based on the information that we had as of that night. So, that's what the personnel committee had agreed to, knowing that once we get into budget discussions, we would like to think that if we do have some flexibility, that would be an area with which we might want to rethink. Because having a no wage increase for employees and a reduction or an increase in what they have to pay for employee contributions, they're already taking almost a $50 per month yet in their salaries, so. We did nothing with... No changes with dental insurance. In addition to the $16,000 increase of health insurance, even with the employees paying 7.5%, we had previously, which came to council, increased DPW part-time summer help, $2 an hour, and I think that was... Is that $4,000 or $5,000? No, $7,800, I think.
I don't remember if that's...
That would also come out of that $30,000 levy. In addition, we also gave a $1 increase for swim lesson instructors. That was the only way we felt that Tom Hartzell actually could get some summer help. As you can see, when we discussed earlier tonight, or no, for finance, he wasn't even able to get summer help to extend later in the year with what he wanted to. So, we were paying minimum wage for summer help, so we had increased it to $2. So, very bleak discussion from Personnel Committee. I know the employees were not happy with the outcome of that. Doesn't surprise us. But we have nothing to vote on tonight, but I just really wanted to make it clear what the negative impact to the employees are going to be, unless we do, once we get into the budget, find some other possible opportunities. So, that's it from Personnel.
Thank you. Anything from Public Works?
Public Works meant last week, Tuesday, I believe. Couple storm sewer issues have kinda moved to the front line, drawn our attention. One is on West Rollin Street across from Central Lutheran Church, kind of going over towards where Hair Doctors is. That is in very, very immediate need of repair. That's basically crumbling into itself. And also on Catlin Street underneath the railroad tracks, because of the fact that they're railroad tracks, that's becoming kind of a must-do type thing.
So, excuse me, so that's not just even the street, it's the buildings that the sewers or pipes are going to. So, the buildings that...
Well, that particular pipe runs down through to the park, right, Tom?
Yes.
Yeah, but some of those businesses are impacted by that.
Well, yeah, I mean...
I mean...
Maybe, or...
I know for a fact, 'cause I was in one, and I saw... I mean, they had to rip a lot of the interior out, so.
Yeah, we don't think that that issue was caused by this issue we're trying to repair. It's the same storm sewer.
Same sewer, okay. I just wanted to kinda add on, too, that it's not just the streets. Also, I think what we need to be thinking about are some of the outlining businesses. That may also be impacted by those.
Right.
Good.
And then, we're also going to try something new for snow removal this year. We're gonna, with the help of Milton, with some equipment and stuff, we're gonna start laying down basically brine, I guess, spraying it down in the streets prior to a snowfall, and hopefully that's going to lessen the amount of packing that takes place on the streets and make plowing easier and save us a lot of money on salt. So, it's kind of a trial run here for this year. If it works, which I'm hopeful that it does, then we're probably gonna pursue it with our own equipment and kinda go more. Milton's really helping us out to get going for this first year, so they've been doing it for years.
How do they help us out? Just showing us how to do it, or is there special equipment?
Right, they have some equipment, too, and stuff that they're gonna...
Oh, very cool.
Our cost at this point is minimal, like...
Right.
Did we say $1,000?
$500 to a thousand.
$500 to $1,000, just to be able to try that for this winter.
Very cool.
So, you can't lose. I mean, and I think it's gonna really help. We just gotta get it down a day or two before the snow falls, and we won't have as much packing, and we won't need anywhere near as much salt.
And, yeah, that's... I think that's where the big... If I may.
Of course.
Where the majority of the savings will come from is the reduction in salt use. So, it's not only a financial consideration, but it's also an environmental consideration, which was actually kind of exciting to get a presentation.
Is that beet juice they put on there?
And then, of course, we had, you know, the usual kind of budget updates and stuff for getting ready for budget and stuff, so that was pretty much it.
Good old Holly Robinson helped out pretty good there, DPW. Yeah, with his curve. Yeah, great.
All right, thank you. Plan incubation. We didn't have anything to bring here, did we?
No, nothing from plan.
Redevelopment authority, we took action on a lot of those that...
Tonight.
Just prior to this, so.
Yep.
Next item is consider adoption of City of Edgerton Resolution 24-17, adopting City of Edgerton Annex to Dane County Hazardous Mitigation Plan.
Make a motion to approve. Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call.
Wellness?
Yes.
McIntyre?
Yes.
Candy Davis?
Yes.
Paul Davis?
Yes.
Frye?
Yes.
Motion passes. Next item is consider approval of the 2018 Rock County Joint Powers Agreement.
Motion to approve? Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call.
Candy Davis?
Yes.
Wellness?
Yes.
Paul Davis?
Yes.
Frye?
Yes.
McIntyre?
Yes.
Motion passes. Next item is consider adoption of City of Edgerton Resolution 2217, support for the Rock County Clean Sweep Program for unwanted hazardous chemicals from homes, farms, and businesses.
I'll make that as a motion, Resolution 2217.
I'll second.
Did you get one of them?
Can I ask what this is, just very briefly, what this is about?
We participate annually in a clean sweep program, which is the collection of hazardous materials to try to keep them out of landfills and out of people flushing them.
Okay.
And so, the Rock County has run that program, and we contribute financially, all the municipalities do participate. And so, they write grants, and so they need to make sure that when they send their grants in, that they have all the municipalities supporting their efforts. So, that's what this is about, is supporting their efforts to try to get grant money to help all of... Use the cost for all of us.
Oh, okay.
We've done it for quite a few years now, haven't we?
Yeah. Thank you for the background.
For 2018, it will be held in Edgerton.
Good.
It rotates around the county.
Sounds like a party.
So, if you don't get rid of your junk this year, hang on until next year when it's here. Okay, let's see. Did we vote on that yet? We haven't had one. Okay, roll call.
McIntyre?
Yes.
Candy Davis?
Yes.
Wellness?
Yes.
Paul Davis?
Yes.
Frye?
Yes.
Motion passes. Next item is to consider street closing at Wilson Street for October 13 and 14.
Motion to approve.
Second.
That's just impacting the one house in the middle of the block there.
The two people that are impacted are signed.
So, the one there, 407. Any other discussion? Hearing none. Roll call.
Candy Davis?
Yes.
Wellness?
Yes.
Paul Davis?
Yes.
Frye?
Yes.
McIntyre?
Yes.
Motion passes. Okay, here's the one that takes a lot of discussion now, consider trick-or-treat hours.
I'll make a motion to approve trick-or-treat hours from 4:00 to 7:00 PM on October 31st.
Second.
Any discussion?
As usual, go ahead.
No, please.
As usual, you get a lot of phone calls for this from people with young kids and stuff. I said, this is just the official trick-or-treating hours, if you wanna go earlier or later, you know, but that's just a general frame, mind that the police department likes to be, or the entities like to know that the majority of people are out there. A lot of people are thinking like, "I can't do it before?" I go, "Yeah, you can, you know." So, would you...
Oh, I was gonna say, I received a number of phone calls from constituents expressing dislike of the current hours. To boil it down, it was basically that the hours that we have are can be troublesome for people getting home from work and getting the kids ready, and there was a general desire to have them pushed back a little bit further. And I thought this was kinda cute. They said, "Well, what fun is trick-or-treating in the daylight, really?" So, that was the feedback.
Extension? They're looking for an extension at the other end?
A pushback. I would say they...
Starting later and ending later.
Starting later and ending later.
Just like I've been saying for years, it's too early. It's right after school, there's nobody home.
Right.
Part of the reason why it's always been...
We have many after-school events still going on, but it's been the same argument for a number of years, but we keep it at four for some reason.
I mean, think about all the people who come home at...
I have.
Get five. Exactly. And they get home, and they wanna decompress and get their own kids ready and get 'em going. And then, by that time, it's halfway through, if not the very end of the event.
I think that the conversation's also centered around the little kids who wanna go out with their kids in the light. So, that's part of the reason why I think four has been some people have supported So that's part of the reason why I think four has been some people have supported for.
Is daylight savings before Halloween?
Yeah.
After this year. After this year.
Yeah.
So that's a plus.
Be dark. Still dark by six by then.
Yeah, but not five.
Right.
But as I told people, the so-called official things, but you're not going to be, you know, taken off getting fines if you go earlier or later, you know?
Yeah, but people can find to the rules. I mean, if you say four to seven, people are going to have their lights on on the porch from four to seven, and they click them off, and the kids don't know any better. They're not going to be, most kids aren't brave. They're not going to walk up and say, "Hey, do you got any leftover Snickers?" They're going to, and the parents are probably just ready to go home.
This is the first time I've heard what you just said about official. I would have thought that was the way it was. I wouldn't have thought that you could go before or after. And I don't think most people will either. They're not going to, I don't think.
People follow the rules.
If you say four to seven, I think the majority of people are going to call it at seven, probably. I just said, yeah, if some people get home at 6:30 or something, I'd go up and be out a little after seven. I don't think I can get a ticket or nothing, you know?
I'm just curious, if I may. The people on this, sitting on this side of the desk here, when you were younger and trick or treating, what was it like then? How often did, when did you go? What was it like then?
So, um-
Back in the old days?
Yeah. It didn't get dark back then.
You're giving yourself too much credit.
Was it in the mid-sixties?
Was it uphill at each house, too?
Back then, you could go out in the neighborhood at night in the dark and not be scared.
Was it uphill both ways, too?
Yeah.
Like 10 miles. I see both sides. I mean, I just, I get it. But, you know, now that if daylight savings isn't going to be told, is it normally after? It's not normally after Halloween.
So it's the first, it's the November 5th, I worked it out.
But I mean, is it normally that late?
It used to always be.
It's always in there.
So that might make a difference this year.
It's last Saturday in October.
How do you mean?
It's been moved into November-
Yes.
The last 10 years. Before that, it was in October.
Yes, I get it. What I'm saying is it's still going to be light longer.
It's going to be-
Where normally it wouldn't be because of daylight savings.
Why don't we just go four to eight and let people go when they want to go?
No, let them go when they're not.
If they want to go when it's dark, they can.
Yeah.
So the current, what is the current motion?
Four to seven.
Four to seven. I think we'll go to four to eight.
Yeah. Okay, so, so the motion's on the floor. Either be withdrawn, or we have to vote on it, or amended.
Now, I'll make an amendment, four to eight.
I'll second that amendment since I seconded the first one.
They're a lot different nowadays than they were when we were trick or treating. I'm explaining my five-year-old granddaughter walking home from school the other day. I says, "I used to walk from the vets' building all the way to the end of Blaine Street by myself." Things are different, so the daytime one-
A lot of things are different, and the other one, too, because fewer people work in town, so they're getting home later than, I mean, if you work there-
But I used to always leave work early, so on that a day like this, I could get home.
Well, that way, we still have the early hours where if they want to take the kids out that they don't want out after dark, we've got that. And if people don't want them coming to their door, turn their lights off.
And we, and actually, if I may-
Or move up by me, we don't get that much traffic, so.
If I may, to the representative from the reporter, is there any way that we could make sure that's mentioned in the paper?
Yeah.
Thank you.
What, so I think we put it in the story this weekend. I think what I'll do is just tie in, like, the story specifically in our ad, you know, moving forward.
I think the paper normally has a little blurb-
Along the bottom.
Along somewhere that says trick or treat hours, and then says what, states what they are. And people look for that a couple of weeks before a trick or treating. They specifically look for that, so.
Cool beans.
Or just go out to some other jurisdiction that doesn't have hours and go anytime.
Like Paul said back in, you know, when we grew up there, everybody basically worked in town back in them days, you know?
Yeah.
Tom, how do you feel about that?
Question.
Right. Do you feel like the later option?
I'd like to call the question, please.
Me, we got the question called.
Question's been called and seconded.
So do we need to vote on the call, the question? Or just vote on the motion?
Vote on the law.
Okay. Roll call on the motion to extend, or the trick or treat hours from four to eight on the 31st.
Wellness?
Yes.
Ian Davis?
Yes.
Val Davis?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Ooh, yes.
Motion passes. Everybody get their costumes ready.
I'm going as Chris Lund.
That is scary.
Okay, then I can stay home, so you'll be all covered for me. Discuss the 2018 budget.
Oh, good, I've been waiting for this.
In your packet on page 29 is the list of capital items, projects, capital equipment, and any notable operating changes. So the, a few things to note about this list, there are some things that are highlighted. Those items are anticipated to be part of a borrowing or paid for by a utility, so those are not, ultimately won't be a levy impact, impacting your levy. Obviously, you can change any of those things that you wish, but those were from, based on our last conversation at the last meeting about our upcoming set of projects and the next borrowing. Those are the items that were included. We can go through, many of these committees have met, some committees have not met yet, but this is the aggregation, I guess, of all of this information from the various requests from department heads. So what will all of this, unless you make changes this evening, which of course, this is just the beginning, you could take anything off this list or add anything to it you wish at this point. We will include everything that is left at the end of the evening in next, the draft budget that comes to you. Hopefully, at the next meeting, we'll have a budget with, now that we have the wage information that we needed, and we've had this conversation, we'll put it all in, and we'll see where we end up. But this is a huge list of capital, hundreds of thousands of dollars, so, and you have a $30,000 levy increase allowed.
Fifteen.
Fifteen.
Excuse, well, thirty, but I've already used up sixteen to seventeen thousand of it on wages.
Right.
Well, not even wages, health insurance increase.
So certainly, there will be lots of things that will have to be removed, so you're certainly free to ask questions this evening of any of the department heads, they're all here, regarding what's on the list. As I said, many of the committees, subcommittees have met and kind of gone through the list of requests already.
I don't see a fun umbrella on here, nor-
No, 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 no. We gave her an extra dollar for the life, some life card. We approved that. That'll take care of the fun umbrella this year. So the highlighted is paid for, you said by-
Borrowing or a utility-
Okay.
Or some other source.
Okay.
I have a question about the additional officer. Tom? Are you looking at an officer, I'm assuming?
Tom, when you say you've been short since 2005, you've been less one? Does that mean less one?
Yes, never, when I was promoted, never replaced.
Oh, okay. Would you like to, us to un-promote you maybe with that?
Third day.
Just kidding. So what would this additional officer do? Would it be just like your other officers? Are you planning to spend more time doing SIAU activities, school activities? I mean, what?
It would be a patrol position, which would, then you'd be able to readjust some of the other assignments and things. But it'd be a patrol position.
Okay, this would, but to assign other positions for what? I'm just trying to decide if, where else we could get some funding for. So would, do you have an officer that's up at school?
We have two officers that work the school as they can. No one's assigned. It's if it's, if an officer's needed, these are the ones that handle most of the calls if we're, if the manpower's not there at the time.
Okay.
But a lot of the officers will be walk-throughs to the school as part of the assignment during the day. But there are still days on.
So they're at, they do, they're at the school, though, for a certain period of time?
No.
Oh, okay.
They'll do a walk-through if time permits.
Okay, okay.
Then we have a presence up there because that's our population during the day. That's where most of the population is. So they'll do a walk-through through the school or to, if there's a complaint that comes up, they generally handle it so that it's consistent, how they're handling students.
Have we ever talked to the school about maybe helping to fund?
I've not. I've talked to Chief about it.
Have you, Tom?
At this point, no, because it's not, they're not there, they're not spending hours there. It's not a-
But I wonder if they, if they helped-
It's the same right now as doing a walk-through through a bar.
Well, I see it a little differently, though.
But that's the same thing.
The bar doesn't have a budget like a school has a budget, right?
They're doing the walk-throughs as they need it. It's part of patrol, it's a job, it's what's necessary to do the job, so it's not a, they're not assigned to the school, they're not spending two to four hours a week there. It's, they might take 10 minutes to walk through, it's no different than walking through Central Park.
I understand that. I actually see that side of it, because-
Yeah, but-
You shouldn't have to pay for protection that, on top of, you know what I'm saying?
I get that. I'm just wondering, though, because I think I heard you say, if you had another officer that would free up other officers to do some of this kind of stuff. So would the plan be that you would have even a part-time officer at school, or, you know?
Right now, if that position would be patrol, it wouldn't be to assign somebody to the school. I mean, patrol officers right now.
Okay. Okay.
That's the main reason for the position.
Do we have somebody that's involved with the SWAT from your guys?
Not at this time.
I hope the Public Safety Committee's going to, there's lots of questions about that whole program. Hopefully, you'll have a meeting with your committee to talk about that.
Yeah, and there's still work through the Sheriff's Department, how we're getting it organized.
So it's not a guarantee that we don't have to do, this is discretionary, correct, our participation in this?
Right, yeah, we haven't committed to anyone.
Okay. That would be a good Public Safety Committee agenda item?
Matt?
Yes, yep, I was writing it down.
So I had, this is really a dumb question. The Veterans Building, the Capital Projects. Because I know we talked about this, I'm trying to remember what committee.
Public Works does. We talked about it in Public Works.
No, I wasn't there. I don't think. Anyways. So can any of this stuff be done under TIF money, or under the facade grants, or the, you know, anything that we have available?
The only alternative funding source for those projects, all of those have a 10-year life, would be your capital surplus.
Okay.
Well, when we pull your budget all together, we'll have funding sources available for you. One of, that's one that over the years you've accumulated, so that's the benefit of having a surplus at the end of the year in the general fund. We transfer to the Capital Projects Fund. So that is really the only other source.
Okay.
I mean, you could borrow for all of it.
Yeah.
And, you know, increase the levy, or don't do another project in place of it. I mean, certainly, those are eligible, those are all long-term improvements to that facility.
Looking at the generator where it says total cost $38,000. Where's the funding coming for the other $34,000 here? Is that what we?
We levied some in six, in 17.
So we have some in account for it.
Yeah, and some in the Capital Projects Fund the year before.
If I recall, this was, Tom, you were going to try to, every year, get approval for a certain amount, so it would build up to pay for that. Is that correct? Is that what this is?
I'm intentional, but that's all that's-
Okay.
But after visiting with the insurance, where we could have a generator here within 24 hours, is that something that we could work, get the building set up for? Possibly even use our generator that we have here that we bought in 99, till the other ones were brought in, if it was necessary?
We fired an, we'll be having an electrician do an evaluation of that to determine if that would be possible. Wire buildings to accept the gener, we have a generated utility, does have a generator that's portable, it's large.
So because of that, because we had talked about it at that meeting, is this something we can take off the list? I would suggest we take off the list. Doesn't mean you're not going to get anything, just means I don't think we need to worry about the expense of that this year.
Just the expense of the-
Gener, well, but the electrician, the insurance company is going to pay for that.
Right, but if we were, I think-
That's all electrical, though, wasn't it?
Correct, they're doing the evaluation. And then, yes, if there are switch gears required, which there would be to be installed, then that would be part of a, I assume, a comprehensive look at all the buildings, and you would decide which ones you're going to wire and which ones you aren't, and how difficult they are if they're not wired.
What did the city engineer decide about the city's generator? They were going to look at that back when they were looking at City Hall and the Police Department.
I don't recall an outcome. Randy, do you remember?
I don't.
I don't, but the, we now have an electrical contractor who's going to look at all of that.
I would hope that one would still be good, and not needed immediately if we have an issue for the wells.
So I guess I'll go back to my original question. Is that something we should keep on here?
Tom, did you get a generator last year with a DPW?
About five years ago.
What'd that one thing run about? Can you remember that?
I don't.
What did it cost, you say? What was your question?
Yeah.
$6,000. It just, it doesn't run the whole building.
Right.
Keeps the lights on, letting open the doors.
Door, door openers.
And how much, did we levy the last couple of years for, the fund for the generator and the PDW?
Right there. The difference between, it's 38 total, and you've got your short $3,700.
Oh, okay, okay. So we already got about 30, almost 34 in the funds? Okay.
We had $34,000 we put away for the generator.
Have we decided if, just a little bit further, but if we went with this type of generator, is there like bigger models or smaller models, more expensive, least expensive?
We'll vary by size on what's the cost there. And the program through the insurance, that'll be there as long as we have that insurance, won't it? As far as it sounded in the presentation anyhow.
Yeah, sorry if we know.
You said like the vets', like I say, the parking lot, for instance, that, that's over a 10-year span, that could go into your possible capital surplus funds for that?
Correct.
Possibly, okay. Do we have a amount that we have in capital surplus funds?
About $150,000.
Okay. Tom, is this what, does this come from Kathy, or what you guys kind of look at up at the vets' building? Get pretty raggy, or whatever?
Yeah, Kathy brought it up to us and, we were like- Parking lot has been bad for quite a while.
Yeah, I know.
Tom, on the veterans' building, would you say that any of these are, if you had to rank some of these in the highest priority, the lowest priority, is there something in the lowest priority on this list?
The sidewalks. And I think we talked about the south and west windows, right, Morgan?
Yes, being a lower priority. I think we can get by with those for a while.
Which windows?
The south and west windows.
Oh, yeah.
The doors are bad, the canopies are failing, or at least two of them are failing. And the parking lot is, you can see what the parking lot is. That isn't necessarily a safety hazard as much as the canopies are truly a problem.
The canopies are ready to fall off.
Yeah.
Okay.
Pretty bad.
And that does become a safety hazard. I mean, they've got children there and-
Yep.
Parents picking kids up, so.
Yeah, it's bad.
So I think we need to make sure that we highlight that for sure.
If we were to hypothetically push out the south and west windows and the sidewalks, what kind of timeframe do you think we're looking at on those?
As long as we can.
Fair enough. All right.
That's a good one.
Five years, maybe?
Okay.
10?
Is that the replacement flower baskets? That's a low number, but are they, are the ones that just got?
It replaces all of them. We haven't replaced any since Tim Clark took over. So he wants to replace them all with slightly larger ones, so that there's more soil mass, so the flowers are easier to keep alive.
So the basket would be bigger, then?
That's his goal, yes.
For the library, the interior painting upstairs, flooring, computer areas, and routers, is that $12,000, all one number for all of that?
I think I might have, did I carry that over?
Yeah, but flooring and router are 2017 projects that we're still waiting to get done. So the painting is just the $12,000.
So we're news-
Yeah, that's really our-
Done.
Already budgeted for?
They shouldn't be on, okay, good, okay.
So the $12,000 is only for the painting?
Correct. We did the downstairs this year, which looks great.
Mm-hmm, it does.
I mean, it's not a safety issue, but, you know, at some point, it will need to be done. Better to break it up into chunks, wait and do it all.
Okay, so he sounds like a broken record. DPW, two mowers, looks like one for the cemetery, one for the parks. Tom, can you give us some background on that?
The parks one is five years old, and the cemetery one is six.
So I'm going to play devil's advocate here. I just told you guys, they're not, they're having to pay more for their insurance this year, and they're getting no increase, salary increase. How can I give two mowers to you for them to ride on? What are they going to think? You know? Pretty bad message we're going to send.
We still need to get the job done.
Yeah, but would, can you get the job done one more year without those mowers?
How many mowers do you have between the cemetery and the parks?
Six, three.
Get them on a one-year rotation, if you could. Get them on a six-year rotation, then just one a year, that would be ideal, if you can-
Instead of two a year?
Yes.
Yeah.
It's, the parks mower has more hours on it.
Yeah.
And then I hear that you can't even hire somebody to do it. So-
I'm hoping.
Do you shift them from parks to cemetery if they get too many hours on it all, or where you can?
Two different sizes.
Okay, that's what I thought. Okay, that's right, that's right on.
We have used the cemetery ones in the parks, but not the other way.
So you've used the cemetery ones in the park. So which one, if you only got one, which one would you prefer?
Parks.
Because that's the older one?
Yep. Well, not the older, the one with the most hours.
Oh, with the most, okay. But that one you can't use in the cemetery?
Right.
Or, no?
Right.
Is that correct?
Yep.
So you'd rather have the parks one, you said?
Yes.
If you had to run it another year, what kind of problems would that create?
Could be anything. Could be mortar, deck issues, bearings.
Just like any other mower, you would say? It's just that you have more hour, man hours on it than you would a normal mower.
Okay, so I'm gonna ask-
Hold on, you're re-
Another dumb question, since we've already asked one. Say we, we were able to deal with that if and when it happened. Because you don't know for sure it will happen. But it's a possibility.
Yes.
And if it does, could we, would we have any way of dealing with the situation at that, say, next July it happens? The mortar burns out or something?
We would, we would have to replace whatever is broken out of my operating budget.
Okay. I wasn't proposing that, I'm just curious what, what would life be like if that were to happen? Okay.
But I'm not seeing a lawnmower listed in your parks budget, or parks.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Six thousand, 150, where is it?
61, 59.
More.
Oh, okay, I see.
Right under fiber chips.
Yep.
What are the fiber chips?
The fall protection that goes under the place structures.
So-
I replace those every two years because they break down.
Don't we get, I mean, dumb question, I'm gonna ask another dumb question. So the parks committees, don't they, the money, don't they get money from the people that live, the residents around those areas? What happens with that money?
This isn't eligible for it.
Oh, it isn't?
Capital, that's a capital, so this is a maintenance issue.
Okay.
And the pool needs painting, right, Ian? Okay, when was the last time it was painted? 10 years ago?
No.
Seven-ish, maybe?
I think it was about seven.
I didn't think it was that long ago. I thought it was just two summers ago.
Yeah.
No.
Seriously?
The pool painting, the deck-
Top flies.
I guess.
2010.
You know, this is so hard. I think it would almost make it easier to cut once we have the dollars in front of us, don't you?
Absolutely.
I mean, for me.
Yeah, I think so too.
Yeah, I think we started out asking questions and we, we dealt and we're actually do, think we're doing the chopping now or not.
Okay.
It means I get to keep both of them?
It does not mean that. It means-
For another two weeks, Tom.
For two weeks, yeah. Tom, I've crossed my list, but that doesn't mean others have.
My circle.
I know. Asphalt roller, tell me about the asphalt roller.
The current one is 25 years old and Kevin has to fix it pretty much every time we use it.
And how often do you use it?
Quite a bit this year.
Yeah.
Quite a bit, yeah.
Are you gonna need it that much next year?
Yeah.
Hopefully not, but.
Yes.
That's a yearly thing that you guys do. They all focus up on-
Because the streets we don't get done this year will be worse next year.
So it, it's just the roller? That's, that's what it is? It's not like a truck with a-
Yeah, it's a drivable machine.
Oh, it is a drivable machine?
Yes.
And so what does he have to fix every time? I mean, is it
Sometimes it doesn't start.
Something different? Is it always the same thing? Is it?
Could be anything. Sometimes it doesn't start. So you have to jump it or tap on the starter to get it to run. There's these pads and bars that keep the rollers clean. They wear out.
Well, you're just full of great news, Tom.
It's 25 years old. It has no safety equipment on it at all.
Yeah. Oh, okay. What are the, okay, so RTP shelter doors, what is that? Oh, racetrack park, shelter doors.
Yes, they're in really bad shape.
The shelter.
The one you re-rent out, it's got all the doors on it?
Yeah, they're, they're-
They are bad, yeah. Is that a safety issue?
Yes.
Okay.
Would we go with regular overheads on that?
Well, that's why there's a range. We're gonna, we're shopping to see if we can do something that isn't, I mean, that's, the whole facade, that building is very visible, and the whole facade of that building almost is entirely doors.
Yeah.
So we're trying to see if we can come up with a solution that's a little more attractive than the very basic, you know, kind of mundane roll-up door, so we're talking with some door manufacturers or door installers, and so tomorrow we're gonna meet with Tom, we have some numbers now, we can meet with Tom. That's why there's a range there. So some, at some point, we'll get it to a committee so you guys can have that, or the council made the decision, but we think that it's, the aesthetics of that building are, are worth debating whether or not we make them try to look something better than just basic.
Excuse the lot, yeah.
It's really visible.
Can we eliminate some doors and make them something solid that looks decent? Maybe with windows in it, which become a vandal issue, but.
When it's warm, you want-
Want them open, yeah.
So I hate to close anything off.
Six on each side?
10 total, according to the window.
Five and five.
So the Keenbaum Park sidewalk and Dickinson Park basketball court, no numbers are there?
Something we're investigating right now.
And they would probably be paid for out of parks, these would be the expectation, we don't know, but
Okay.
We're working on those numbers.
Okay. CPR mannequins for the pool. Is that for teaching?
Yes.
Obviously?
Yeah.
How many are you looking at?
That price there doesn't look like very many of them.
Three mannequins.
So how, what do you do today?
I have one of, I have an adult mannequin and a child mannequin that I use right now. And it, when you have Red Cross lessons, it's, or Red Cross-
You need more than one.
Supposed to be one for every two.
So is that something that you can borrow from the fire department when you have those, or have you been, or what?
Well, the fire, that's where, once Red Cross stopped allowing us to use them, they didn't rent, they didn't let us use them anymore. They got rid of that service. And then I was using them from the fire department, and then they stopped using it, and then I was using it from Craig, who lives across the street.
Right, that-
Yeah.
I don't know his last name.
Right.
And I was using them for them, but then it's very difficult to coordinate times because he uses them as well, and so, yeah.
So why, the fire department doesn't use them, they're using the automated ones or different ones, or what's-
I think they use Craig as well.
Well, it's the same thing.
Yeah, I think he's brought his down there.
Because Craig does the instructions, that's why, so Craig's keeping them-
His wooden then, too.
Right.
I think they're his and Walton's.
Yeah, he purchased them himself.
Yeah, but some of the ones from the fire department?
I don't know how many are down there.
I think, will you check in, or maybe I'll check into it? I mean, I, I think it's extremely important, but I'm wondering if, if they're available at the fire department, and I know it's pain, to kind of coordinate, but since we're running so tight this year, maybe that's something we could look at. I know it's, it's not a big amount.
I don't know if the hospitals have any, but it'd be worth checking into, see if you can borrow them from them. If they have them, I'm not sure.
Who's that?
The hospitals.
Oh, sure.
We talked about that at parks, and I failed to call the hospital to check on it, so I'll put it on my list of stuff to do.
So the AED batteries, is that just an extra battery to have on?
No, they expire, and mine expire in November of this year. Along with the pads, you're supposed to get new pads and batteries by the expiration date.
Be nice if we could talk to volunteer fire department about that.
They have the same equipment to get.
Well, they, they perched, we perched, we-
Correct, yes.
You remember them.
I was a member then, yeah.
Correct.
We, we, yeah. But I would, you know what I would do? I can't, I would, I would go back to the volunteer fire department and tell them you're now due for pads and, and a battery. What, if anything, could they do to help you out? Now, I'll give you the contact person, it's not the fire department, it's the volunteer association. They may or may not be able to help you, but it's an option.
All right. So you'll give me that after the meeting?
I will.
Okay, thank you.
And we meet next Monday, so.
Okay.
And what about the movable chair?
That is to have a lifeguard chair at the top of the pool that the health department wants me to have there.
You don't have one up there? What? Well, I mean, do you, how many do you have at the top part of the pool?
Oh, at the top pool, I have three.
Okay.
But they would like me to have one at the top of the slide.
Oh, so would you have four up there?
It would be part of the lower rotation.
It's been yours since I've been there.
You wanna see pictures?
No. For some reason, I don't think it'd be this slide you'd be showing me.
Yeah, it wouldn't.
Okay.
Just that the duck's in front of it.
I will say one thing, I, I'm gonna put in a plug for one thing, for the police department, office countertops. And I don't know if that's an estimate you, is that an estimate you had, Tom? 5,000? That seems kind of high to me, but. I, I was in the police department, and that's like this, that they're using for desks, that it is so torn up and so bad, I would not even want to sit at that as a desk. So I'm putting a plug in for that one. It's bad. I mean, you can't even sit there without ruining your clothes, or even getting slivers or cut in your hands, so.
Did you look at the paint while you were in there then, too?
I did, but I'm, and yes, it needs to be painted, but in all reality, I think the counter, the office tops are more important than anything. I think, you know, if you had to do one of the three of them, that's what I'd say for sure. Paint probably could wait if you had to. The garage door, though? Oh, no, the floor, oh. I was reading that as the door. The floor is in bad shape in the garage, really bad. Terribly bad.
Yeah, those office countertops are minimum at least 25 years old since we, in the police department, and that was the same ones where the WPN Lite had them there. They're getting old. Power and Lite was in there about 10 years before we put the police station in there. We put that police station there back in 2003 or '04, if I can remember. Or 1993 or '04. So they're getting old.
You don't need anything whittled off tonight, just headaches for the next two weeks and then bring it back here and.
That's what we'll do. Not, everything's on the table. We'll put it all in there, and you'll see where you are, and you'll have a better idea of what you need to do next time.
Now you guys see why personnel was so ugly, personnel meeting was so ugly. It was a tough decision to do, tough recommendations.
So is everybody done discussing the budget for tonight?
Yeah, I am.
Mayor Alden Persons and staff reports. Like I was mentioning, Fireman's Ball, the 14th at the community center, Pink Houses playing. Might be kind of loud in there, but hey, fill it up, it'll deaden it some.
It's planned.
Pink Houses.
Yeah, and I would put a plus in for that, too, Chris. I might say, you know, we've been talking tonight about a couple of things that people could utilize the volunteer fire department for, for AEDs or batteries. This is how they raise their money, to purchase this type of stuff, so I would encourage anybody who could make it, please make it and help, help raise funds for them, because they definitely give back to the community.
And if you, if you see the people down there working and they're short of help, feel free to step in and help. I see Josh Simmons got the sign done out here, painted, the frame painted up out on the patio. Looks, looks good there. It's got the list of all the people that worked on it and donated. So that's kind of a completion of the project out there, isn't it? Is there anything else that needs to be done out there? Okay, thanks, Josh. He did a lot of the painting for us, so. That's all I have.
I'd like to give a personal thanks to all the public safety officials, you know, around the country. And especially the police in our town that keep us safe, considering the tragedy that happened in Las Vegas today. Blessings to the families.
I'd like to thank Randy Orin and his employees for a wonderful tour of the new wastewater treatment plant. Very impressive. Nice job. I also would like to thank anybody who is involved with, that means council too, with our waste management services. The electronic disposal day that they had, which was what, last Saturday, a week ago Saturday? A lot of communities do not offer that. In fact, my son lives in St. Prairie, he said that they are charged $50 a television to dispose of, and ours is free, so it's a wonderful service that they offer.
Anyone else?
I make a motion to go into closed session pursuant to Wisconsin statutes 19.85, deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, the investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session, discuss and consider cornerstone negotiations.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Thomas?
Yes.
Katie Davis?
Yes.
Paul Davis?
Yes.
Ryan?